Good morning. We call the meeting of the Franklin County Board of County Commissioners to order for October 24th, 2018 at 8:30 a.m.
Commissioner Howard?
Present.
Commissioner Waymire?
Present.
Chair Renode? Vice Chair Oglesby?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
You stand with me for our pledge allegiance following by our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we come to you today, God, and, Lord, I'm reminded of your word in Proverbs, chapter 15, God, that a kind word can turn away wrath, God, and I pray that, God, that we measure our words and our responses in everything that we say and everything that we do. God, I pray, Lord God, that you would be with us today. You would give us wisdom. You would give us knowledge to make decisions that need to be made. And, God, I pray for your hand of protection over our nation, over our state, and over our county, and over all those that are out here doing service for us in the county, Lord, and, God, be with us today in everything we do. In Jesus' name. Amen. Correspondents in organizational business? Have none. Public comment?
Gene Hurt.
Just a reminder, a citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or on pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may be, they become an agenda item at a later date. Gene?
Gene Hurt, 219 West Fourth Street in Linden, Kansas. Okay. It's been brought to my attention now, it's not just Osage, but it's also here in Franklin County and other places that evidently what I've experienced and what other people are telling me now, the state is taking down the Republican Party signs, and they're leaving the Democratic signs up in some of the areas that they've taken the Republican ones down. Now, what they've done, and what I've been involved seeing this, is they'll take them and then they'll take them to a certain location, depending upon whatever county it is, and they're dropping them off, off to the side. They're not destroying them, but they're yanking them down because they're not being put up properly. Well, to me, what I saw and what signs I knew were there and they were taken down, they were taking the Republican signs down and leaving the Democratic signs. Now, my, my problem with that is, if you're going to do it to the Republicans, you've got to do it to the Democrats. Because as you see the shirt I wear today, and I've already voted early, I am concerned about our country, our counties, and the state, as well as the United States. So I don't think it's appropriate for the state to be taking down the signs and leaving some of them up, depending upon if the, whether or not they like them or not. That's all I've got for now.
Ted Stone King?
I've come before you to make comment on special use permit 1808-1620, the co-op sale and dispensing of anhygras from the Leloup facility. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend either the planning commission meeting or the last commission meeting due to work constraints that were involved. The agendas don't get posted in time to request time off. Fortunately, this time there, there was enough time for us to request the time to be here. It's both concerning and disappointing that the commission continues to allow commercial and now what appears to be a retail operation in an area and a location that is not suited for it. Safety and health are continuing to be a primary concern in this area. I have read both the co-op's application of the special use permit, also went back and read the article that was in the planning commission request for the special use permit from back in 2012, citing that this area would not have any retail operation or fill nurse tanks at this particular site. Now it is seeking to expand that operation into a retail operation at this site, which is going to, again, increase traffic in this particular area. The other concern of safety is not only in the security of the facility, I've read about some of the automatic controls that they apparently have on this tank and that piece of it, but what happens if there is an emergency? Are the responders in rural Franklin Township trained, capable, and equipped to handle an emergency if something should happen of this nature? We're talking about a very hazardous substance that needs to be handled in a proper way. The increased traffic, again, is a concern. The recent corn transfer traffic is evident of that. These vehicles, again, the co-op vehicles have been going out loaded to the north, and we appreciate that aspect of it. But either the contract vehicles or the producers are continuing to cross the 13-ton bridge, and when those folks come out of that facility and get on Reno Road headed west, they do nothing but accelerate. And when they hit the bridge across Spring Creek there, it shakes when I can stand in my shop, which is a good 200 yards away from that bridge, the entire ground. And recently, and I see Mr. Hag is not here, but the public works had to come out within the last week and fix big potholes on the approach of that bridge. And this is after earlier in the year, because of the truck traffic that crossed through there when they were transferring grain out, they had to come out and dig up the entire approach on the east side of that bridge, close the road for almost a day. So that traffic continues to be a problem. And with that speed that this, these trucks travel down that road, that while the dust control does help, it continues to be a problem. If, you know, the dust control either needs to be expanded or the county needs to regulate both the speed and the weight in this particular area if they're going to allow this type of operation there. With regards to the anhygras, the suppliers that bring the anhygras to this facility currently, for some reason, they typically come in about daybreak on Saturday or Sunday mornings. They roll down the road, they go across that bridge both directions. So one, one direction they've got to be loaded as they go into that facility at this point in time. So again, they, they are illegally crossing that bridge at some point. I have gone down there when I've noticed them, been out doing chores early in the morning, and sat on the road and watched. Apparently, they have keys to the gate to get in. There was no co-op marked vehicles there at that point in time, and the drivers went in, hooked up to the tanks, did whatever they had to do, and then left. So again, those things need to be regulated. I had also had a call from one of the individuals on Utah Road who couldn't be here today because he also had to work, Brian Ballman. He said that the dust control, while it has helped, he lives on Utah Road where it comes close to the Shawnee T intersection there to the north. He said the trucks are rolling so fast going to the north that as they break and they get past his dust control, they roll dust up behind them that just becomes a cloud that crosses that intersection there. And he asked if I would communicate to folks here today. So in, in closing, I, I ask, how far is the commission going to go in letting this commercial facility expand in an area that's really not suited for this type of operation? Thank you.
That's it.
All right. Next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the, the minutes from the last meeting, which was?
Ten ten.
Ten ten. Tax change orders in the amount of $15,065.58. Claim vouchers in the amount of $2,273,659.16.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Yes.
Next item of business is to consider approval for a request from the Ottawa Veterans Parade Committee to contribute funds toward the 2018 Veterans Day celebration.
We have Mr. Nicholson here to talk about the parade this year.
I'd like to thank the county for supporting the Veterans Day parade event. This will be the 26th to 27th year that we've been having this event. Sherry can't be here today, so I was asked to come in her place. She was prepared to ask for a $1,200 donation if the, if the county could see their way to, to donate that. We appreciate the donations, and that's about all I have to say, is that thank you very much for your support in the past years.
What did we donate last year?
$1,000. And that's what we've done the last several years.
Gary, what's the extra $200 for that you're asking for?
Well, the, I've noticed that we've, we've had an increase of the Civil War group, so we are needing, we have to buy wood, have to buy hay to support that group. And that group is getting bigger each year, it seems to be, and so therefore, there's extra costs there that, that we're enduring now, that we haven't had before. So that would help buy lumber and wood. I'm, I'm sure that some guys are trying to donate wood, but I don't think we're going to get enough to take care of the group, because it'll be there Friday night, Saturday night. So it'll take quite a bit of wood to keep those people warm. So that's an extra cost that we're dealing with.
We do have one, one public comment on this item.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Are you ready for your public comment? Gene Hurt?
Okay. Now, I'm not against the parade or the Veterans Day celebrations or anything whatsoever. No, I'm not. I think it's a great thing to do, continue. But to me, there's another issue on the agenda today, and I'm going to talk under that part too, but I'll wait for that one. But, you know, on the agenda, on this subject matter here for the Ottawa parade, it said Not 1,200, it said 1,000. Where did, and, and maybe it has been in the past for $1,000 for the Veterans Parade. But what's the city doing, of Ottawa, doing for them? We never hear, when this comes up, or the past years that this has been done, what is the city doing? You know, I don't think it's only the obligation of the county to come up with the parade for the veterans, it also is the city of Ottawa. And I think $1,000 is, is substantial to what I see, and I don't know whether they've used the money all in the past for the parades of that amount that is given to them. So, and asking for the 1,200, I hear what the gentleman just stated about the extra $200, but, you know, and I'm going to go say it now because, so it makes sense to you. You've got other towns in this county that want to have Veteran Day celebrations too. And now you're going to increase this one when they don't know nothing about it today? And you've got another one that's coming up for a certain amount of money? I think everybody wants to do more and have more, but they can't get it from the county, but only from what's been passed given. Okay? So Wingsburg's only begun certain amount, and look what Wellsville's done. They're getting big as Ottawa almost, and some of theirs, and they're not allowed that type of money. That's all we've got.
Derek, would this fall under transit guest tax, or would this be under something else?
It would. It would fall under.
I would intend to pay it from transient guest tax, yeah. It'll bring people into the community. Absolutely.
It's, typically, it's more than a parade, it's an entire event at Forest Park of reenactments and, you know, it's not just a parade.
Right. Just touching on what Gene just said, not discussing that, but it's kind of comparing apples to oranges. The other, Wingsburg and Appenous trade off on their programs, and they're asking for $200. Well, they don't really, it's a meal, and they put on a meal, and the kids at the school put on program. So they really have no money tied up other than the fact of the meal. So by us helping cover the meal for Wellsville and Wingsburg, that, that's the big difference between what this is and what that is.
I'd be happy to stay at 1,000.
I would too.
I'd make a motion to approve a request from the Ottawa Veterans Parade Committee to contribute $1,000 towards the 2018 Veterans Day celebration.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, I think the lesser amount is probably appropriate at this time.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Yes. All right, so we go to the next item, which is a request from USD 287 to contribute funds towards their 2018 Veterans Day celebration.
We have the principal of Appenous Elementary School here to discuss this.
Yes, we are hosting, we take turns with the elementaries at West Franklin, Mr. Howard just spoke of that. This year, Appenous Elementary is hosting. We have a very nice program. We have several veterans in the area that come and attend that celebration, and it's a great time for us to, you know, acknowledge our veterans and get that information out to our children. So after the event, we also host a dinner for the veterans and their families. So we are here seeking today, the same amount that we've always requested is $200 to help cover the meal expense.
What's the date on that?
It is November 9th on the Friday.
At noon time, then?
Excuse me?
At noon, or?
It, the program starts at 9:45, and then right after the program, then we host the dinner.
That's a sufficient amount?
Yes.
All right.
I'll make a motion that we, oops.
We have a public comment.
Okay.
Gene?
Okay. All right, Mr. Howard, you're right. You know, that's all they do. But Wellsville has a parade, okay? Wingsburg's had a parade, okay? Those people want more money on their events for the Veterans Day celebration. So I still have to say and still state this here, I think you need to give more. But now, you didn't give more for, to the city for the parade now, so I guess you're going to stick with your guns about what you normally give. That's fine. But remember, these towns and these side towns and these events where they hold, they do do things more, and, and costs are going up, whether you hold a meal or what. But when you have a parade, as Wellsville does, and Wingsburg has too in the past, I think the commission's got to think this over a little bit more in the future of moving it up a little bit for the small towns. Thank you.
Well, since this is all they're asking for, this is all they say they want, this is efficient amount, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve a request for the USD 287 to contribute $200 towards the 2018 Veterans Day celebration.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Yes. Item number three is to consider awarding a bid for replacement of the East Jail HVAC system. Brandon, you going to present?
Morning.
After we set out our RFP for this project, and we had quite a few people show up to take a look at our equipment, is, see about replacing that for us, we got two bids in for that, one from Design Mechanical for $94,757, and the other from BCI Mechanical for $69,802. Both of those bids are comparable, I mean, as far as what they're wanting to do and the equipment that they're going to put in. So my recommendation is to go with BCI Mechanical for the $69,802.
Given the large discrepancy in the bids, I had Brandon double back and, and talk to the contractors, make sure that we were talking about comparable equipment, comparable services, and indeed, that does appear to be the case, so.
Luckily, Brandon has expertise in this area, so all the more reason to be confident.
BCI did not offer the extended four-year warranty like?
Design Mechanical did. Yeah, that's correct.
Have we used this company at all, Brandon, for anything else?
I think that we've used them for some various things in the past, some rooftop unit replacements, I think, but that was before I was around, so I really can't speak to that for sure.
They're local, they do quite a bit about it.
The hospital too.
You guys have a representative here from the company if you'd like to ask him questions.
Come on up. I'd like to know about this extended warranty or whatever, maybe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for the time. Brandon Livingston, I am a local, live east of town, president of the Fair Board, so I want to thank you again for the support on that. But I'm president of BCI Mechanical. We're office in Gardner. We eventually hope to build a new building on our property over on East K-68 Highway where we warehouse, the former Dale Wayne Building there, so. We're a commercial industrial contractor. We did the HVAC on the Neosho County Community College Project, that was a design-build project. We performed the HVAC on the OMA Municipal Memorial Auditorium here in Ottawa. We did the hospital emergency expansion project. We were the successful HVAC contractor on the new elementary school here in Ottawa, just to name a few. We do work for Blue Valley Schools, Shawnee Mission Schools, Johnson County, Wyandotte County, Water District One, so I can kind of give you a list of resume. I'm actually a licensed engineer myself, I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of Kansas. I spent nine years with the train company as a sales engineer, and so I've worked closely with Brandon. If you want to look at adding an additional four-year warranty, I'm sure we can do so at a minimal cost, and certainly, that's something we would offer. If it's not listed in the specs, you know, again, so, any questions that way, I'd be more than happy to answer, but we appreciate, and, and I think the show of support for our local community is evident in our bid, so.
Any public comment?
Yes, we do. Gene?
This wasn't normally on the agenda for today. You go back a few days, it wasn't on here. This morning, I woke up, I looked on the internet, I seen this is on here today, because that's what I usually do, because I know there might be changes. Sure enough, there is, this one here. Now, I know a little bit of something about this stuff, okay? Now, I know there's an extreme amount of money difference between the two, one $60-some-thousand, the other one $90-some-thousand. But you look at the detailed report about the individual that gave you on the $90-some-thousand. He's giving you a four-year warranty with his, and the other one ain't, okay? Now, in that one, and it states, this is a jail, this is the old park, isn't it? Isn't this the old park, okay? All right, the tubing's not adequate. That's what I think he's right in this outfit that's calling you about the $90-some-thousand, because if you put and leave that old equipment lines in for what you've already got, and you don't specify that, because this other outfit didn't really specify that either, from what I just saw this morning. You better take this in consideration, Commissioners, because I'll tell you, if that tubing fails, you're going to have a hell of a lot more worse after a year, and you better have some kind of warranty involved with it, because you don't want to lose out. And when you're putting in a brand-new system, I think you better put and strongly look at the lines that it's going to have to have to maintain that system itself, because it's altogether different. So I only caution you, you're going to have to make the decision, go ahead, I just caution you, when you go with either one or the other, you've got to look at the warranty that's there for five years, an extra four years for a cost, so.
Could I have the gentleman come back up and address that? I mean?
I believe what Mr. Hurt was asking, well, to clarify, the warranty, the extended four-year warranty is a manufacturer's warranty. So it'll be no different than when you purchase an automobile, you can buy an extended warranty on your automobile. In the big picture of things, that's a minimal cost. I'm going to just guess off the top of my head, maybe a couple thousand dollars at most. As far as the refrigerant piping, I think is, I believe, is that what you're alluding to? Okay. So the refrigerant piping, and I spoke with Brandon about this, we're going to review the sizing of the piping. If the sizing of the piping and the integrity of the piping is, is okay, then we'll consider reuse of that in accordance with the manufacturer's recommendations. That's what the manufacturer's told you to do. If the sizing of the piping is incorrect or the condition appears to not be suitable, then we will replace the piping as part of our bid.
Thank you.
Make a motion to award BCI Mechanical the bid to replace the jail's East HVAC system in the amount of $69,802.
Second it.
Commissioner Howard?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Yes.
Before we move to the next item, while the sheriff hasn't expressed any gratitude whatsoever for the board's decision to do this, I know that the people who work in that building are incredibly grateful that we're fixing this HVAC, so certainly appreciate the board's thoughts in doing that.
But I'm, I'm extremely pleased that we're able to do this at this amount of money, considering it would have cost us $50,000 right out the gate if we, if the system went down. So I think it's a good move for the county as well.
I do too.
Brandon, you will look into the warranty on, or the extended warranty, correct?
Yes.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to consider a approval of a special use permit application number 1808-1620 for the Ottawa Co-op Association, amending a special use permit number 1112-1124 to include the sale and dispensing of anhydrous ammonia to individual nurse tanks in a L1 light industrial zone. nurse tanks in a L1 light industrial zone. Mr. Walworth?
Good morning, Commissioners. As you've indicated, the matter before you this morning is the consideration of the special use permit to amend a previously approved special use permit which included just the storage of anhydrous ammonia. This special use permit, of course, would allow for the individual sales and dispensing of anhydrous ammonia to the surrounding farming community. This matter was considered at your meeting of October the 10th. There was some discussion regarding the provision of adding a condition for additional dust control. We have discussed that with the applicant, they are present here this morning and can respond, but they have agreed to provide additional dust control at the intersection of Reno in Texas. That would be 300 feet in all directions from that particular intersection. There are stop signs, as you probably are aware, on Texas as it comes to the intersection of Reno, and there is a bridge then north of Reno that this 300 feet will have to include that if we just measure it from the intersection, but they have agreed to comply with that particular condition, and if that is something that you feel is appropriate, you could add that to the conditions that were recommended by the planning commission. I have nothing further to add unless you have any questions. I thought this was pretty well discussed at your meeting of October the 10th.
Okay. Any questions?
Jane Broke.
Morning.
Morning. Clark Wanger, Ottawa Co-op, 302 North Main here in Ottawa.
Most of your, these nurse tanks are just going to be pulled out there with either tractors or pickups, correct?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
So I can't imagine them running too fast pulling those behind them.
No, they have slow-moving vehicle signs on them, so they're limited how fast they can pull them.
Could you tell me the amount of reduction this might bring to the local facility in storage and traffic then? I mean...
Should substantially change the amount of traffic that comes into Ottawa currently, because a lot of those customers come in here now to get those anhydrous tanks, and last year, this is our smallest plant here in Ottawa, and we moved the most amount of anhydrous through it versus any of our other plants, so.
But it doesn't move the entire, I mean, you're still going to offer anhydrous here though locally, right?
That's correct.
I mean, it's not going to eliminate that, it's still going to be in Ottawa.
Sure. Just as a guess, maybe cut the traffic in half here in Ottawa?
So maybe 50%.
Yeah.
Is there, what type of training does your people go through to deal with it? Do you have any particular training that your people have to go through?
Yeah, extensive, extensive training, and they have to be certified if they're handling anhydrous ammonia, they have to get a certification, get that renewed every few years. We also do an extensive in-house safety training on not only that, but everything we do. And anhydrous is highly regulated by Canada's Department of Health Environment, EPA, OSHA, several different government bodies.
I would think Alan probably has done numerous training on that also with the emergency management, so.
He has, yeah.
Highly regulated, the safety aspect of it doesn't bother me, but it is getting to be quite an intensive use down there on that gravel road, and we've gotten quite a few complaints, I have. As far as traffic, what do you anticipate, how many, much more, how many more vehicles will this add?
It's hard to say. Obviously, there's no nurse tanks going out of that facility currently, so it's usually consolidated to two times a year. This year, it's probably just going to be in the spring, because we're not going to get anything put together until the spring, so you have a spring run, lasts for maybe a month, and to guess, the tanks are around two tons apiece, so you're looking at, I don't know, maybe 10 to 20 a day during that short period of time.
Do you have a, like a master plan for that site? What you'd ultimately, any other services you'd want to offer from there? Will you continue growing that site, or?
Probably not, because it seems to be extremely difficult to get anything done out there. And I've got other areas and other communities that I can grow.
Other than the one here in Ottawa, where's the closest other place that fills these nurse tanks to you?
Edgerton. We also have one in Waverly, Burlingame, Overbrook.
Are you having to do any extra security out there because of the anhydrous?
We have a security, the fence around it, and then that's active with the security system on top of it, and then, which is the same for any of our other plants, the other ones aren't locked cages around them like this one, this one's actually more secure, but all of them, we have to padlock the gauges and the valves and everything. While we're loading customer tanks, one of our employees will be out there.
I talked about this being a retail operation, it doesn't seem like it's a typical retail operation, it's through your main office, isn't it?
Yeah, there won't be any accounting personnel, there'll just be tanks loaded out there and wait, farmers come and pick them up.
Similar to dropping grain off there, same.
Yeah, we're doing retail on the grain site already, it's just the anhydrous, to this point, has just been used as a storage-only facility.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. You have a comment?
No, we do not.
We feel that we have addressed then the issue that was raised at your previous meeting, and that would be condition number nine as a part of your draft resolution that was included in your packets.
I would add staff is recommending approval of this amendment. It fits within our comprehensive plan. I mean, at the end of the day, this is still an agricultural county, and our comprehensive plan reflects that. This is an amendment to an existing special use application, but, and I think discussing that amendment is fair game, but I don't think it's appropriate to open back up the discussion of the entire issue with the traffic in the gravel. That's not fair to the co-op, that's not fair to the people who support the co-op, because we did not notice it out as such, like, and it's, that special use permit has been heard and has been approved, so really, today, for your consideration, is just the sale of anhydrous ammonia and what that may or may not change out there, so.
Well, fan of looking for a motion for this special use permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the special use permit, application 1808-1620, amending special use permit 1112-1124 to permit the sale and dispensing of anhydrous ammonia to individual nurse tanks based on the finding and subject to the nine conditions cited in the attached resolution.
Would you want to take him up on the offer for dust control in the intersection?
Yes. It's number nine.
That's included, number nine.
It is our number, okay, sorry.
Mr. Waymire?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Oglesby?
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, if you can.
All right, staff reports?
Yeah, last night, FCDC had its annual meeting, which kind of serves as a year in review for the things that FCDC accomplished. City manager and I gave a fairly comprehensive update on Proximity Park and where that's at. You know, I think you guys are consistently kept up to date on where that's at, but if you haven't been out there recently, Montana Road looks amazing. I mean, it's largely completed, the concrete is down, the storm sewer's in, the inlets are there, so if you go out there and take a look, that would give you a pretty good idea of what those roads are going to look like. Kingman is moving along a little slower due to the bridge, but we are working on that, and the hope is that that gets completed, a lot of that gets done this winter. Still looking at a May of 2019 completion date for Kingman and Montana. Now, as you all are well aware, our other obligation is the intersection of 59 and Kingman, that's also progressing well. We're still in the design phase there, but we're currently reviewing 90% plans in conjunction with KDOT. You will recall that KDOT pledged 1.7 million for construction costs. That is roughly what it's going to cost to build that out. Now, ultimately, as the park grows, you know, we'll turn that intersection into something a lot bigger, more turning lanes, more through lanes, but I think where we're currently at and what the board has historically told me is that it'd probably be prudent to wait until, you know, we have companies, tenants out there, and so that, we're hoping to bid this winter, and that that'll be completed in the fall of 19, so it's certainly conceivable that by this time next year, the roads out there are largely completed, and so currently, we're working hard on marketing the park, and we're going to have a discussion here soon on what the best way to do that is. Do we want to hire some kind of broker or some kind of firm to help us out with that? Do we want to try to do it ourselves, use FCDC? And so we're certainly exploring all of our options there, talking with other communities, see what they've done. One thing we talked about at length last night, and that I think is important, you know, this is a project that could affect, you know, I mean, it could affect this community for generations. I mean, the purpose is to try and achieve prosperity and build a better, more sustainable community, and if you look at it through that lens and attach a lifeline to it, we're still very much in the infancy here. Like, I know people are starting to see roads and, you know, there's a slow trickle of questions, like, well, who's coming? Do you have someone? And that's probably only going to intensify, but please keep in mind, as the purpose that was conveyed to me for us doing this project wasn't to make money off of the sale of that land out there, it was to get the right company in who's going to bring good jobs to the community, who's going to fit in with the culture of the community, going to make our children want to stay in the community, and that's going to take time. I mean, that's going to mean, I mean, the chances are, we're not going to bite at the first offer we get. I mean, maybe we will, maybe it'll be great, but maybe we won't, and so I think that, you know, if your opinions on that have changed, then by all means, that is your decision, but if they haven't, then I would be prepared to kind of give that message, because I do think that the expectations will be there, just given the, you know, it's $30 million of taxpayer money roughly, and so. Couple of announcements, I sent you an email on this, we have a joint luncheon with @USD290 on the 31st, and then Midge Ransom and the Health Department are having their open house that day from 10 to 2 to show off the new renovations in there, so certainly, if you can stop in at both of those, that would be appreciated. That's all I have.
Brandon?
You have anything?
Alice?
Janet?
Early voting has begun, we started on Monday, and the turnout numbers so far are substantially higher than what we've seen in any other election, including the presidential election. We reviewed those numbers yesterday, and are substantially higher. We've had over 200 early voters at the end of the day yesterday, which is a great turnout, and we just encourage people to continue to show up and vote early. We have a lot of early voting hours, we're going to be open every day from now until the election. We have two late nights, next Tuesday and Thursday will be open till 7:00, both of those nights, and the next two Saturdays will be open 9:00 to 1:00. We'll have our signs out, so everyone will know if you see our signs out, come in and vote, we're open, even if it's not during normal business hours.
Great. Commissioners' comments and board reports?
I haven't been to any, anything since our last meeting. On the Commissioner comment, I will say that Jim told me this morning that the truck was there at 6 o'clock this morning in their parking lot to strip the roads that's been chipped and sealed, and they'll be starting on 50 Highway, and they should be on it today. So hopefully, a long-awaited, we'll have some lines on those roads.
Attended a hospital meeting, September was a slower month financially, charges, principal reason being there's only 19 business days in the month of September, so it's, other than that, things are going well, they continue working on the affiliation, and nothing else to report.
Okay.
I guess the biggest thing was I went to the KAC meeting last week, and biggest announcement was Randall, Alan's going to leave KAC and pursue other interests at the end of the year, so Randall's been there since, I think, '96 or something like that, a long time, and been really good for the KAC and expanded it and made it a very viable organization for all the counties, so we'll be missing Randall. Some of the highlights, I guess, of course, I went to the policy meeting, and it's pretty typical, the legislative policy meeting was trying to get the demand transferred to return to the counties and basically not create legislation that creates more expenses for the county, which the state should be responsible for. Two things, and one of our discussion groups came up metal health is to keep metal health out from underneath the tax lid was another thing that came up also, since metal health is such a big item now these days. Had a real good guest speaker from Washington State, a TV personality named, what was his name? Bill Stanton, and he's an expert on the Beatles, and his whole presentation was on the Beatles, and he had five decisions that the Beatles made that made them such an outstanding legendary rock and roll band, and I'll just go through the five, and we could spend a long time talking about each one, was number one, they spread the spotlight, that means any one person shouldn't have all the spotlight in any decision-makings. Number two is have a single shared vision in your decision-making, and you play to your strengths, if you have certain strengths, you need to play to them. You need to shake up, shake up whatever you're planning on doing, shake up the status quo, and everybody carries their weight, and I think this is important in any decision-making, is kind of go through that process of, if you're in business or making a decision to do something, it's kind of go through those same processes. As far as K-Camp goes, went to that meeting, and they're down about, their claims were a record high for last year, and they're down about a million dollars in assets from 26 million down to 25 million. They initiated the stabilization of premiums, so it's in effect our cost of... They initiated the stabilization of premiums, so it should affect our cost of, our premium to be with K-Camp, and they got five new members joining, including Miami County, so Miami County put it out for bids and looked around for alternate sources of insurance, and K-Camp was the best one, so that's a kind of endorsement of our membership at K-Camp. K-Works had a lot of hail damage last year, so they had a lot of claims too, record claims in K-Works. That's kind of the highlight for me at the organization, or the K-Camp, or the conference. Unfortunately, I went to a maintenance seminar, and it was kind of a advertisement for caterpillar filters and justifying the extra expense for caterpillar filters over other filters. So I learned about maintenance and the value of caterpillar filters. Don was there for the conference, and Ian was there for the conference, and I know Jana was up there, Sue was up there, Jamie was up there for the conferences, so we might ask those folks to come in sometime and just see what they saw in the conference, but next time is gonna be down in Wichita, the next KAC conference. Kind of a quick summary.
I've attended a joint meeting with the city, with the planning and zoning director there and the city manager to address emergency shelter needs within Franklin County, and how those are gonna be addressed under a FEMA grant that we were awarded to take care of some of those needs. I also have attended a number of different chamber events, and one of which was last Thursday, was an after-hours event, but it was the opening of the gas station convenience store at Price Chopper, at which I was very impressed with the interior of the store and design and the way it's laid out and what they're offering, a number of healthy choices within their healthy food choices. And to hear their owner, who was there and present, he was asked a question about their investment here, and he was, he was very excited to make that investment in this area. And he also stated that they now employ a hundred and sixty people within Franklin County, and I thought that was, that's an outstanding investment for our community and the kind of partners that we're all looking for. And then last Friday, I attended the Bow Meow benefit that was held at the historic post office for Prairie Paws, and it was well-attended. I think they had almost close to three hundred people in attendance. They did super great on their live auction and silent auctions, and it looks like it's gonna be a very profitable event for them and help them to achieve their goal of trying to become more financially stable, so. With that, I consider a motion for adjournment.
I might add one other thing. I just thought of, I was talking to the Osage County, some of their road and bridge people were there, and they have chip and seal equipment to do their own chip and seal over there in Osage County, and I don't know, it might be prudent for us sometime, maybe look at chip and seal equipment maybe to do our own.
Coffee County does their own also.
Might look at that.
And I think we're on the cusp of changes in our public works office. As you all know, Jim Hague is retiring at the end of this year. We're actually in the middle of conducting interviews. We had an interview last week, and we have several more next week. And certainly, that is among many ideas that I look forward to discussing with a new director and potentially exploring directions that that department can go. And so I would encourage the board, you know, just think about, you know, what your opinions and feelings are on how we're doing things in public works, because this is a good opportunity to, you know, take it any direction that really you feel like would be beneficial for your constituents, so.
That might be something, if that was something, or the equipment that the county owned, then that that might be something that could be contracted potentially to smaller communities as well? Or even locally in the city of Ottawa, I presume?
It could, yeah, and I, this specific issue, I.
I know that's a big, big picture, but.
Yeah, I know nothing about the cost of the equipment and whether it would be feasible or how long it would take to recoup that investment, but I certainly think it's worth exploring.
Anything else? All right. Consider a motion for adjournment?
Make motion.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?